Nice.
Did you say can I after that?
Nice, nice.
I mean. I bet you keep your head down.
Of course you can.
Supposed to be a man.
I'm definitely not here messing with that, but.
You need to get out of my pocket anyway.
There was a call. Trying to think of what's on the, uh, why the crowd. Oh, there's Brooke.
That's making my head explode.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I do.
How's it going?
I have an iPhone, but I don't have a Mac. I have a, uh, Apple iPad.
Okay. I always get messed up with the darn.
So Google, how do I sync?
I'm in central time.
Do that.
Yeah, it's the media.
That is.
Cause they'd always trant me back.
I did it so long.
Yeah, on, on my calendar.
It's all of us.
Post to the job Tuesday.
All times it's Mac products, they just automatically commit.
Yeah, my, uh, calendar is disconnected still.
No.
And so. They're lying.
Or, or, or it can do people coming up that.
Yeah.
Afraid they won't get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's easy. All folks out of work. Or afraid they're gonna get laid off.
Yeah.
Back to blue too.
Welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us on May Day for our meeting of mayor and council. Would you please stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson?
We'll bow our heads. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for life that we get to do it again. Father, I say a special prayer for all of the elected officials, the city and staff, and all of our servicemen and women who do the jobs to keep us safe. Father, I say a special prayer for the entire community. God, I pray that as we are making the decisions of what's in the best interest of the city, that we're able to hear your voice. In Jesus' name, amen.
The call to order, our May first, twenty twenty-five, meeting of mayor and council. We'll begin with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or revisions? Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor, we do need to add one, uh, item under old business, which is to discuss and possibly act on the agreement with the Canton Housing Authority for the hundred thousand dollar, uh, I'm sorry, for the five hundred thousand dollar loan to TBG for their Lytec application.
Okay. We'll add that as new business item C. Any further additions? Not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We have some special guests and visitors with us this evening. And I will begin with one of two proclamations this evening. This is City of Canton proclamation number two oh two five oh five oh one one Historic Preservation Month. Whereas Historic Preservation is an effective tool for economic development, tourism, planning, growth management, and neighborhood revitalization, helping to foster local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas Historic Preservation is relevant to urban and rural communities throughout the nation and to Americans of all ages, walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and to honor the contributions made by dedicated individuals to help preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that have shaped us as a people. And whereas the celebration of Historic Preservation Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of appointed Historic Preservation Commission members who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement and preservation of the city of Canton. And whereas Historic Preservation Month provides an opportunity for citizens to recognize the important role that Historic Preservation plays in individualized and in communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that this month of May twenty twenty-five is hereby designated as Historic Preservation Month in the city of Canton in conjunction with the celebration of National Historic Preservation Month. And I would like to ask, uh, our city planner and, uh, historic Preservation Commission liaison, Brittany Anderson, to join me to accept the proclamation. I just want to comment further that, uh, how important Historic Preservation is to this mayor and council. Uh, I think evidence of that is, uh, how we walk our talk. In the past few years, we have preserved over five hundred thousand square feet of historic buildings in the city, uh, in downtown Canton alone, uh, not to mention other areas of the city. Um, so it's important for us and will continue to be important for us as we move forward, uh, while respecting the character of our city and, and the past. And since we're on the topic of preservation, I have another special proclamation to present, present this evening. And that is City of Canton proclamation number two oh two five oh five oh one, celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of History Cherokee in Cherokee County, Georgia. Whereas History Cherokee has served as a guardian of Cherokee County's rich heritage for fifty years, steadfastly preserving the stories, artifacts, and traditions that shape our community's identity. And whereas since its founding in nineteen seventy-five, History Cherokee has been instrumental in protecting historical landmarks, educating the public, and honoring the cultural legacy of those who have called Cherokee County home across generations. And whereas through its leadership, exhibitions, public programming, and stewardship of the Cherokee County History Center, History Cherokee has inspired residents and visitors alike to connect with the past and appreciate the foundations of our shared future. And whereas Executive Director Stephanie Joyner has led History Cherokee with a vision, dedication, and heart, guiding the organization through times of growth, expanding its reach, and strengthening its role as a trusted steward of local history. And whereas the continued success of History Cherokee is made possible by the unwavering commitment of its staff, volunteers, donors, and community partners whose passion ensures the stories of Cherokee County will be preserved for generations to come. And whereas in this milestone year, we reflect with pride and gratitude on the profound impact that History Cherokee's worked across five decades. Now therefore, I, Mayor Grant, mayor of the city of Canton, do hereby proclaim May first, twenty twenty-five as History Cherokee Day in Cherokee County, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating the fifth anniversary, fiftieth anniversary of this remarkable organization and recognizing the lasting contribution of Stephanie Joyner and the entire History Cherokee team. And I do believe it's also Ms. Joyner's twentieth, uh, year with the, the, the organization, so I'd like to ask Stephanie Joyner to join us. Getting my exercise this evening, so. Okay, we have one more, uh, guest and visitor, and this is a presentation, the twenty twenty-four annual report from the City Canton Police Department, presented by our crime analyst, Alec Robles. And Chief Marty Farrell.
Good evening, mayor, council. Uh, thank you for taking the time to hear our, uh, annual report. Um, I want to introduce Alec Robel. He's standing back here behind me. Step one up. Alec is the creator of the report. He pulls all the statistical data for the information contained in the report, and I thought it was fitting to have him present the data to you. It's his report, and so I wanted him to do that. So any questions that you have that are complex of nature, he will certainly be able to answer them, so.
Okay, great.
Without further ado, Alec, go ahead, bro.
Thanks, chief.
Welcome, Alec.
Good evening, everyone. This is our twenty twenty-four operational report. Mission of the Canton Police Department is to create a safer Canton by reducing crime, entering the safety, safety of our citizens, and counting, continuing to build trust and partnership with our community. So first thing we have here is our projected population. We get this information from the U.S. Census Bureau whenever there is a census, and we take the information from the census to build a projected population based on the growth trends. So from twenty ten to twenty twenty, obviously, we had a very big growth in the city. We had a forty-four percent growth. Um, taking that from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, we had, uh, annual, um, growth rate of approximately three percent. So applying that to twenty twenty-four is where we got our twenty, or thirty-nine, thirty-eight thousand three hundred five number, so that's up about fifteen hundred from twenty twenty-three. This is our, what's called Group A crimes. Group A crimes are categorized into three categories. We have crimes against persons, crimes against property, and crimes against society. Uh, the alternative to this is Group B crimes, which are going to be your quote-unquote less serious crimes, things like loitering, driving under the influence, disorderly conduct, things of that nature. So Group A crimes are going to be your more serious crimes. These kind of crimes we have will be counted if there are multiple victims and one crime. For example, if there are five victims and one aggravated assault case, then that ca, that case is counted five separate times. So that's some context that we try to keep in mind whenever we are looking at the numbers. That doesn't necessarily mean that there are that many incidents, but there have been that many victims of a specific crime. Property crimes accounted for about fifty-eight percent of our crimes, which is obviously better than the alternative. Last year, we, uh, we were around sixty percent in twenty twenty-three, so we're right in that same margin. And we'll get into more of these numbers here in a couple slides. Our calls for service, any call for service is any officer-related activity that's radioed to the County nine-one-one dispatch center. This is anything like accidents, or phone call requests, or zone patrols. Anything that's radioed into nine-one-one is going to count as a call for service total. We have thirty-one thousand four hundred ninety calls for service from Cherokee nine-one-one in twenty twenty-four, which is sixteen percent increase from twenty twenty-three. Overall, we've had a, about a thirty-two percent increase in our calls for service. Obviously, a lot of that is going to be from staff increases, population increases, things like that over the past five or six years. It's gonna account for that, uh, general fluctuation. But we have not seen anything that's really stood out. We're kind of in the same area, which is, is obviously a good thing. Calls for service go. Getting back into our Group A crimes, like I said, these are going to be our crimes that stand out, that we take note of. Obviously, the most important thing is we had zero homicides in the year of twenty twenty-four. Our biggest crime that we're generally gonna see every year is larceny. Larceny is any crime where a person or entity is deprived of their property. Obviously, we have some major retailers in the city. We have Target, Walmart, Best Buy. Businesses like that are obviously gonna report shopliftings and things of that nature a lot more frequently, so that's gonna account for a big, big chunk of this larceny. We also had a very low number of violent crime. Um, like I said earlier, a lot of these, when we look at these numbers, we take, we tend to take into account the amount of victims, not the amount of incidents. So a crime like aggravated assault tends to have multiple victims in certain cases. So even though that's already a low number as it is, that doesn't even necessarily mean that many incidents as much as that's just that many victims, uh, that many people were victims of that particular crime in the year. Our traffic accidents, we had forty-five fewer accidents in twenty twenty-four, so very similar numbers to twenty, twenty-three. Uh, this is a three-point-two percent reduction. Our roadways with the most accidents are always going to be our gateways into uh, Riverstone Parkway, Coming Highway, five seventy-five. Obviously, our high-traffic areas are always gonna result in traffic accidents. Our arrest and citation totals, we had a small increase in arrests, uh, but we did have a thirty-three percent increase in citations and warnings. A lot of this is gonna be attributed to our Special Operations Division, which is now fully staffed. We have had, uh, fluctuation transfers within the, with, within the department over, over time in the past couple of years. But now that the, the Special Oper, Special Operations is fully staffed, um, they tend to have, um, traffic operations, a lot more concentrated patrols in our high-traffic areas, which is gonna result, obviously, more citations and warnings that are being written. We have, um, like I said, a lot, a lot of traffic operations. Usually, they try to do at least one a month um, in our high-traffic areas, um, to, to reduce our, anything from erratic driving to traffic accidents, so. Our Criminal Investigations Division, or CID, um, we, at, at a fully-staffed CID, has two sergeants and five detectives, and we had five hundred eighty-five cases in twenty twenty-four, so obviously, they stayed very busy. Sixty-nine of these cases remained active at the start of twenty fi, twenty twenty-five. This number is obviously gonna have gone down now that we're in, in May. Um, so sixty-nine was at the beginning of twenty twenty-five, and as cases have been worked here over the past couple of months, that number has dwindled down. Our fifty-one percent clearance rate is right in the area where we want to be. We try to be at least percent, which we are. Our clearance rate is anything cleared by arrest, closed, or cleared by exception. Anything that's cleared by exceptional means, um, is anything that is not cleared by one of these categories, um, as far as cleared by arrest or anything inactive. So, uh, good examples of things that are cleared, uh, by exceptional means are when an offender dies, or if it, if a victim refuses to prosecute an offender. So those are things that we classify as cleared by exceptional means. Our property and evidence, our intake was eight hundred and seventy-two pieces of evidence. This is gonna be any missing property or any evidence of a crime, whether it is security footage, a DVD, or a receipt from a fraud. That's anything that goes into our intake. And our one thousand eighteen pieces of disposed-of evidence, it could be any drugs or drug paraphernalia that gets disposed of, or any recovered property that was, like I said, missing, or victims of theft that all of that gets classified into our disposed-of property as well. Our training, we had three thousand eight hundred seventy-four total hours of training officers in our department. One thousand two hundred fifty-eight of those hours are going to be in-house trainings conducted by certified op, certified instructors from CPD. These types of trainings are ethics trainings, defensive tactics, anything that we can teach in-house at, at the department is going to go into that in-house training. Uh, outside training is anything that obviously officers have to go to a different department or a training center. Uh, gang trainings, crime scene investigations for our detectives, uh, financial or cryptocurrency or fraud investigations, obviously, again, for our detectives as well. So like I said, those are just the types of examples of trainings that we have for our officers. This is our records division. Just touch on this really fast. We had just under thirty-four hundred customers served. Anybody that walked into the department for any reason and needed to touch base with our records division, our biggest thing is going to be accident and incident reports. Anybody that's involved in an accident or needs a police report is going to be, be a big chunk of those. Alcohol permits for our servers and waiters and waitresses inside the city. Open records requests or impounds, anything like that, anything that can be handled within our records department. Finally, these are the promotions which we had inside CPD this year. We eliminated the rank of corporal from our rank structure, so all existing corporals were promoted to sergeants. Uh, Lieutenant Hamilton was promoted, promoted from sergeant. Captain Ray was promoted from lieutenant. And Deputy Chief Tucker was promoted from captain, and then obviously, we had Chief Farrell appointed as chief of police last March as well. So that concludes my twenty twenty-four report. Thank you guys for your time. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Robel. Appreciate your excellent report. Especially the good news with increased population and thirty-two percent more calls, I think, this, this past year. We have less crime, safer roadways, and I think a fully-staffed department at this point. So congratulations to you, the entire Chief Farrell, your entire team, uh, for keeping our city safe. Uh, we appreciate you all and everything that you do, and, uh, appreciate the great report. Any questions for Mr. Robel? Awesome. Great job. Thank you. We'll move into our business meeting at this time. Uh, you have in your packet, uh, the draft minutes for our council meeting of April seventeen. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We have a few informational items this evening, uh, beginning with the review of the March financials. We have our financial director, Mr. Luckett, here.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
Uh, so I'm here to present our March financial report. Um, so you have the report in your packet, and I just want to highlight a few items for you this evening. Um, on our first page of the report, you can see, um, our cash position through March. Um, so for, um, all of our funds, we had sixty-three point two million dollars in cash and investments. Um, you can see at the pie chart at the bottom, um, about eighteen percent of that is represented in our money market accounts, which are our water and sewer bond proceeds. Uh, forty percent of that is in our bank account. Uh, thirty-two percent is in Georgia Fund One, and ten percent is invested in our U.S. Treasuries. Uh, moving on to the next page, uh, we're getting into our general fund. Um, so to highlight a few things here, general fund revenues, um, our budget for FY twenty twenty-five is twenty-four point six. Uh, we've collected eighty-eight percent of that, uh, through March. Uh, for the month of March, I wanted to highlight that, um, this is the time of year that we're seeing occupation tax renewals and our financial taxes come in. So that explains, you can see, we, uh, collected about one point two million dollars in taxes for the month of March. Um, so overall, for the year, we've collected twenty-one point six million dollars in revenues for our general fund. Uh, moving down to our expenditures, um, overall, our expenditure budget in the general fund is around nineteen point seven million dollars. Um, so we spent one point seven million dollars for the month of March, and that's about forty-eight percent of our annual budget. Um, one thing I did want to highlight, um, for our, the line that says, uh, general government buildings, you can see we had a fairly large expenditure there compared to the budget of about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Um, that was the mitigation work, um, that we paid in March for the burst pipes that happened in the public safety building in January. Uh, you'll, when you see the report for next month, you'll see a credit, uh, where we received reimbursed that through insurance. Uh, taking a look at page three of the report, so overall, for the general fund, you can see for the month of March, um, spent about four hundred and thirty-six thousand more than we collected in revenue. Um, but for the year, we're about twelve point two million dollars, uh, in terms of a positive cash flow for the general fund. Uh, taking a look at our next page of the report, this is our water and sewer fund. Um, here you can see that, uh, we're budgeted in terms of revenues for the water and sewer fund at twenty point two. Uh, we've collected, uh, nine point one million dollars so far this year. Um, expenditures for the water and sewer fund, operating expenses are thirty-four point one million. Um, that includes the, um, water, I'm sorry, the sewer, the new sewage treatment plant capital. Um, and so for the month of March, you can see we did, um, pay some invoices for that construction of about two point six million. We'll be getting reimbursed for that through our bond proceeds. Um, so overall, for that fund, at the bottom of page four, you can see that we spent about one point seven million dollars more, uh, in March than we took in. Uh, but as I mentioned, that's kind of a temporary, uh, thing for the month of March as we await to get reimbursed for those capital expenditures. A few other things to highlight in the report, uh, if you can turn to page, uh, nine. Uh, so this is our hotel motel tax fund. I just wanted to give you an update here that, uh, for the month of March, we collected eighty-three thousand dollars in hotel motel taxes. Uh, we're at five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the year. Uh, that's a, that's pretty much on the same trend as we saw last year in FY twenty twenty-four at this point. Um, and last year, we collected about one point one million dollars in hotel motel tax revenue. And of course, those funds are restricted. They go to support our tourism efforts and a few of our other partner organizations. On the next page, our rental car tax, uh, just wanted to give you an update here. Uh, we've collected ninety-four, about ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, for the year. Um, that's about twenty-five thousand dollars more than what we collected at this point, uh, last year. And as you can see, those funds are primarily, at least this year, spent recreation and parks, um, and a few of our other contributions to some other partner organizations. Uh, lastly, um, just wanted to point out our SPOLOX funds. Uh, we talked, I think, at our last meeting about, uh, our most recent receipt of sales tax proceeds. You can see that in the month of February, they're at five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, for SPOLOX. Uh, we have not received, uh, the most recent, um, proceeds as of this report, so we'll have that for you next month. So, um, that concludes the report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Luckett. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have a review of Community Redevelopment Tax Incentive Program. Mr. McClure?
Good evening, mayor and council. It's been a while since I've been at the podium, so forgive me. Um, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. I just wanted to give an oversight of a current ordinance that we've already got in place, Chapter fifty-four, Article eight, the Community Redevelopment Tax Incentive Program. Within that, it's, it's referred to as the BLIT tax. I'm sure a lot of y'all have heard it, mentioned around before. The definition of BLIT tax, where, where it comes from Georgia Constitution, that minimum property that constitutes endangerment to a public health or safety. So within the ordinance itself, it is very specific that gives definitions of BLIT. So from those definitions, it winds up having the different categories, a violation of applicable codes, which could be if it's just a habitual code violation that we write up, unfit for human habitation, life safety, drug crimes, repeated illegal activity, abandoned property, unsanitary, unsafe conditions, defacement of property. So it has to meet a minimum of two of those code violations for it to be considered a blighted property. That's in definition with it. And I, I want to reiterate in the fine print, it cannot be pu, like purely off of aesthetics. So it has to be of those definitions meet for it to qualify as a blighted property. So looking at this, you can obviously tell from some of the photographs, full disclosure, it's not in the city limits. From those properties, you can tell that vacant properties, boarded-up properties, issues with, you know, protective treatment, different things like that for commercial properties is applicable. When it gets to residential, residential has a criteria within the ordinance that if it is occupied by at least one resident, it would not be qualified to go underneath the BLIT tax. So just as long as there's one resident within it, it could not qualify for a residential property. So here's where I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible. If y'all have questions, feel free to just ask away with it. Either myself or administration will be more glad to help answer. So breaking it down for each step of the process to go through, demon of property, BLIT, the first initial step is the building official determination. And just for clarification, the definition of building official could be the building official himself, code enforcement staff, zoning, individuals, i- it could be whoever a designate is for that. So a first step is from it, an inspection has to be done. That's, that's the first step. Or a survey, one of the two. That's the initial step. Beyond that, once we conduct the survey or conduct an inspection, then it has to go by the next step to the public officer issuance. The public officer by definition is the city manager or his designate. So once we submit that, that's, it does start a timeframe, and I, and I may misquote it a little bit, and I apologize, but it, it kind of does start a time-sensitive standpoint. Um, it was advised from us that I believe from that standpoint, like forty-five days. From once we as staff submit it through to city manager, then it has a forty-five-day window of once we've got to take and get to the next step, which is the public officer notice of hearing. Um, from that notification that has to get sent out. From that notification that has to get sent out from the public officer, has to be at least ten days, but not within thirty days. That'll have to come from the public officer. So from that standpoint, after the hearing, notice of hearing has been submitted through to the individual, then we proceed on to the actual hearing itself. The, the hearing itself has to have a written designation. So once a property becomes deemed, it has to have a written designation, meaning that the property has been deemed fit, unfit for that standpoint, meeting the criteria, or if it does not. This is where we wanted to make sure for communication through to everyone to understand with this ordinance. The next step is the appeal process. This is where, based on the ordinance, the appeal process does come back, if it's deemed, it does come back, if they do appeal it, it comes back to council. Council is the one that sits, makes the decision of either backing it or not backing it. Forgive my term, I don't say it exactly right with it. But from that standpoint, once it gets past the public hearing standpoint, then it goes into basically applying the tax to the property, if, if it's denied of a appeal process. Then, once it's applied, and, and there's criteria to it, and I'm skipping over a lot of information, I know, but I'm trying to breathe with y'all. It has to be submitted in before June, I believe it's June thirtieth on it, for it to be applicable that code, that year for taxes. So if it's after that deadline, then it'll go on to the subsequent year to the tax. So from that standpoint, once you get past the part of that, the last two items is probably the most meat to it to coming off of a blighted property. There has to be a corrective action plan or a redevelopment plan that has to be submitted in through to the city, has to be submitted through to the building official. So within that plan, it has to have details of repair, closures, demolition, restoration. Also, it has to have five acres or greater must address relationships of land uses, improved traffic, public utilities, recreational and community facilities, and other public improvements. Has to be consistent with the city's comprehension plan, variable funding sources, and show feasibility. This is what they have to submit through to us. Timetable also to complete the work. So there's criteria that they have to submit through to be able to come off of the BLIT tax. Once that's done, it goes through the review process of it to get approved or denial to it. And then, once it comes through, the removal process, coming off of the BLIT tax to it. Once the plan's been approved to it, public officer requests property through a thorough reinspection of the property. So we'll go back out, make sure everything is met based on the plan that's been resubmitted through. And then, once that's done, same thing, it applies the same way for the timeframe of, of June, June thirtieth, I believe that's the correct date on it, that if it's submitted in through prior to June thirtieth, it'll go into effect that, that year through with the taxes. If it's after that date of June thirtieth, then it would actually be the subsequent year. And the property eligible decrease, so they'll actually receive a decrease in taxation, applying a factor of zero point seven five of the city, city mileage rate for three years. So that being said, I do want to kind of just take a moment, let y'all look at this. You kind of question yourself, is this blighted property? Do y'all think it's blighted property? Because here it is after the fact. That property was actually not a, considered based on this ordinance, a blighted property. It was occupied by, it was a residential, it was occupied by more than one. So it wouldn't necessarily have met the criteria to it. So I just kind of wanted to show that for some relevance to understanding. So within this, you can go through and look, the attachments ain't on here, are they? Mr. Bobby Dyer helped us out tremendously, and also for all the steps of the application parts and the different stuff that has to get submitted throughout the whole process. We also, I had that, I believe, included in the agenda. So, and I believe Ms. Annie had helped out by giving y'all a copy of the ordinance itself. If you got any questions, be more glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. I mean, I know we've had this in our code for a while now. And again, I know it's commonly referred to as the BLIT tax around the state, but it is, in essence, a redevelopment tax incentive program. Like, as you mentioned, I think briefly, that if you do comply, then there's a reduction in, in tax. So really, that is the ultimate goal here. So I think it is an effective tool. It's in our code. I'm a big believer, if we have things in our code, we should be enforcing them. So thank you for the review of that. What are the next steps? I'm glad we're talking about it. That's number one. Thank you for that. So what are the next steps as far as?
Identifying properties.
Okay.
There is nothing that you have to do. There's no cost to the city beyond people's salaries.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to seeing some redevelopment come from this. I hope so. Any questions for Mr. McClure?
Yeah, I do have a question there.
Mr. Tillman?
Thanks for the report, Mr. McClure. Appreciate all the work you do. I know, I know it's a very tough job, your, your team. So thank you for everything you do. So the definition being, if it's blighted, if it's, it's not considered blighted, if one or more persons live in that home, correct?
For residential, yes, sir.
For residential use.
And, and just a single-family home.
And it's a single-family home.
Right. So multi-family.
With, with the definition of, if the definition is violated relative to health and safety, and there are occupants in that home, how, how does code compliance deal with that and, and overlay that with whatever state law might, might play into that decision?
Our, our codes that we already have adopted, not the, the tax, the tax code, but other codes, we would still continue through with the enforcement to remedy to get to compliance.
But it would, it wouldn't qualify in that case for a BLIT, a BLIT tax or redevelopment?
Correct. If it's residential, it would not. For a single-family with one or more occupants, it would not qualify for it based on the ordinance.
Yeah. And I also understand, and I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here, but we, the city municipalities, can't go into those homes if they're occupied and to determine if there are su, uh, health and safety issues without the, the permission of the resident, correct?
Correct.
So it's basically what you conceive of outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Unless there was probable cause for an unsafe structure, then it would include through to our building official as well. There's, it depends on the scenarios.
I know it's a slippery slope, so appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
I, I, I do. I mean, I had the same question, that one of the criteria is it's not suitable for occupation. But then, if it's occupied, it's not, you can't apply the BLIT tax to it. So those seem to be like counterintuitive, but.
But we have all, we have other ordinances. I mean, you have the process for demolishing things that are, you also have the life safety code violations if people are living there. There, there are.
There must, it has to be at least two of those.
Right. And that's, one of the things about the definitions, some of them are less stringent, but you have to have two of them.
Right, right.
So I mean, the code violation alone is not normally allow us to go demolish a house, but that plus one other allow us to impose the tax.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Can you go back two or three screens? You did show the picture of that property right there.
Yes, sir.
Number one, thank you for sharing that. I guess it kind of tugged on a heartstrings a little bit, although it does not qualify by definition for a blighted property. It just reminds me how fortunate most of us are as, as community members not to have to live like that, because that looks in pretty bad shape to me. And I could just imagine children being in that homes. I guess my question is, although it doesn't qualify for a blighted property, how long can someone, how long, how, how long is the property allowed to stay like that? Because that just doesn't look safe for anyone to live in.
I, I do want to mention, blighted property could still be considered blighted property, but based on this code, it couldn't be considered blighted property for the BLIT tax. So I, I do want to clarify that a little bit. So it is a closed case. I mean, I, I could speak about it in more detail with this property, but it took us a long time through court for this process to get this back into compliance, a long time. And it finally come through. You can see from the next slide to where it did. I mean, it's almost for the full duration on and off since I've been doing code enforcement. It's been constant. So it was absolutely amazing just come back and they, they rebuilt that structure very quickly. So yeah, it was, it was a good turnaround.
So we, we, within the last seven years or so, we had some real good successes using the, uh, city could go demolish a house. And we only had to do that once on Main Street, but several other properties, that prompted the owner to fix them up. Because a lot of times, these are inherited property, and somebody just don't want to sell it, but they don't have the money to fix it up. And it, and you have to push them a little bit. But that's where the city has to be willing to fund the demolition, which you said you would, would do six, seven years ago, and we went through several of them, and it, and with, with good success. So that tool's available for houses like that.
So the BLIT tax or this ordinance is just an additional tool, and again, a redevelopment incentive. So I think.
It, it, and it was really enacted by cities after two thousand and eight for vacant shopping centers. That was really the point of it, because that was people that, you were hitting them in the pocketbook. And, and that was the idea, was that was a great incentive for them to redevelop their properties.
Right.
And I, and I do want to mention, I mean, there was a lot of steps of this process, of this ordinance, that reason why it came through to Mr. Peppers and staff and legal. We had to get some things established to be able to proceed for the full enforcement of this ordinance. So that's the reason why I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention with it.
Well, we know it's an ongoing challenge, and there are a lot of factors involved, both legal and health and safety, and the list goes on. But I guess the legal, the ones that, that take the longest many times. But we appreciate your efforts and your team's efforts, and.
So you, you mentioned about inspecting houses. So one way a case can get started is if the police department was into a house for some reason and looked around and said, oh, my gosh, this is really bad. They can actually request the building official to go look at it. And so we would have some ability to, we'd have some evidence then. A police officer who's trained to look for evidence would, would be able to tell us what it was like.
Definitely. And I guess one of the criteria is crime or repeated crime. So that is a way that we could, you know, check that box off that that is occurring or has occurred. But it is one way to, to see inside.
A multi-family property or a, a commercial property, yeah.
Definitely. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. McClure. Appreciate it.
Thank you, y'all.
We have item C, and this is for your information only, no discussion. This is put an upcoming case on your radar. That says, Case ZCA two-five-zero-four-dash-zero-zero-one, Request to Eliminate Zoning Conditions on the Property Located at the End of Joe Green Lane. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In two thousand and five, about a thirty-acre piece of property was annexed and rezoned into the city. It was rezoned at that time to R two for the development of no more than a sixty-nine single-family subdivision. No construction or development has taken place on the property since that time. We have had several people to inquire about the develop, developability of the property. We even had one gentleman several years ago looking to put a shooting range in there. Obviously, nothing has taken place. When the property was rezoned, it was, had numerous conditions placed on it, and they deal primarily with the development of a subdivision. An individual has since bought the property, and he is looking to build a single-family home on the property with an accessory dwelling for his brother. Since the property has been encumbered with all these conditions, he is looking to eliminate those conditions and develop the property solely under the requirements of the zoning, which is now R ten. That changed in two thousand and fourteen when we adopted the new zoning now. They are having their community input meeting tonight. I have received comments back from the county that they have no comment. The public hearing for this will be on June the fifth.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Appreciate that update. Any announcements this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to, just a general comment relative to the GIC team. Couple of weeks ago, we were in Cartersville for our retreat. Under Mr. Patton's leadership, we had a great retreat over there. Lots of best practices shared around the state with other communities that we shared with them as well. Just a really good team. We have, I think, twenty, twenty-one members of the team. We are also in the midst of identifying properties that might need some of the work that Mr. McClure just pointed out, particularly those that need work on the outside. We're embarking on a, a full paint job of a house on Lakeview Drive. We did the pressure washing last Saturday. We'll be painting the house on the seventeenth. So I just wanted to kind of make the public aware that this is ongoing. We will certainly be asking for volunteers as we go along. This property is catty-cornered to raise donuts. So as you can imagine, the entrance to that neighborhood, Mill Village number two, is, the, the house location is ideal in that we, we have signs out there. You know, the house clearly needs paint now that we've, we've pressure washed it. But when that work is going on and after it's completed, I would expect that we're going to have a lot of folks that are going to raise their hand and say, I didn't, I didn't raise my hand when you guys sent the first forty-five letters out, but I see the work you did. And thanks to some partners like our volunteers, Lowe's and Home Depot stepped up. Lowe's volunteered and donated all the materials, including paint and, and materials. So we've got some really good community momentum going, and I expect that's going to continue and even grow as that project gets completed.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. We appreciate that great work. Any other announcements? We have no one signed up for our public input this evening, so we move into old business. Item A, Discussion and Possible Action on Canton Water Pollution Control Plan Expansion to Six MGD Project Schedule Extension and Additional Construction Management and Residential Project Representative Services Request by Atkins Realist in the Amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor, staff and city council, city attorney council with an E. City council are still reviewing this request and would request that council take no action on it tonight.
Council okay with it? Move on to item B, Discussion and Possible Action on the Election of a Voting Delegate for Georgia Municipal Association. Mr. Peppers?
Need someone to be our voting delegate at GMA's convention and also cast the ballot for the city on the election of officers for District Three North. It will need to be someone who is attending the GMA convention in June.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Roach.
If it's all right with you guys, I would like to, to make a motion to appoint Mr. Waterman as our voting delegate for the Georgia Municipal Association.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? I do believe Mr. Waterman has signed up to be at the GMA conference in June. We're nice and cool down there in Savannah that time of year. So no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members vote in motion. Congratulations, Delegate Waterman. And then, item C, which we added, was Discussion and Possible Action on the Agreement for the Canton Housing Authority to Conduct a five-hundred-thousand-dollar loan to TBG Residential. Mr. Peppers?
I provided a copy of this to the council. This will need to be enacted by both the city council and the housing authority. The application for LITAC is due on May sixteenth, so we're asking council to approve it tonight. It's the same agreement that we had last year with the housing authority with two exceptions. First exception is we've removed, removed the references to ARPA funding because the ARPA funding is closed out. And the second is that we added a condition at the end of the document that says that they, the project by TBG needs to get a permit within twenty-four months after being awarded from Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program at Department of Community Affairs. Agreement's been run by TBG. Agreement's been run by TBG. It's been delivered to Mr. Rice with the housing authority. They're just waiting on their team to sign it. We would ask council to consider approving that document tonight and authorizing the mayor to sign it so we can meet the time constraints.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Of course, we made your commitment to this loan at the last meeting. Are there any questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor, if there aren't any questions, I would like to make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Tull.
I would move that we approve an agreement with the Canton Housing Authority for a loan of five hundred thousand dollars for TBG's Riverstone Lytec application and approve the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. We will move into new business at this time. Item A, discussion and possible action to install an interactive kiosk in Cannon Park. We have our Canton Main Street Board Secretary, Mr. Hatabian. Good to see you back at the podium and, and glad to see you talk about something that's possibly potentially a much less dollar item, ticket item. Seriously.
Yeah, it's, actually I'm not asking for any money.
All right.
Which is kind of unique.
Well, you're welcome back then.
As part of Main Street, we, the board was tasked to improve the wayfinding in downtown. And we've done a little bit of research and come up with an interactive kiosk which will be split between tourism and Main Street, the cost of it. And what we're doing now is to seek permission to install it on city property and then ultimately turn it over to the city. It's set up where city staff will be able to update it in real time, change things on a moment's notice. It will be set up where businesses will, you can touch the screen, the businesses will be, will come up. Their manuals will come up and any other information. So it's a, it's a big improvement from what we have now. And looking to install it kind of near where the, the, I guess it's the sign that's out there now that's somewhat outdated. I have been in touch with Public Works to coordinate installation of power. And I think we're, we're all set to, to move forward with, with, with your blessing.
Okay, thank you. I know we have possible action on this item, but it is the first time we're hearing it. And I think, you know, hearing that Public Works will be involved in power. I mean, I think if we could get more details on what's involved and, and, you know, power and costs and who will be maintaining that. I don't know how we go about that, but before we consider actual action on it.
The, in, in talking with, with Adam, they've been in touch with Georgia Power and it's just a matter of how they want to run the, run the power. It's, it's low voltage line. It's nothing elaborate. It's just a matter of installing a conduit and figure out if it's, if they're going to bore underneath the bricks or take them up and put them back in. Still waiting to hear back from Georgia Power.
Okay. And the kiosk that you were looking at, has that been used by other cities and downtowns and?
Yes. I, I know, I don't have specifics on it. But in the, talking with the integrator that, that we've selected, this is their go-to kiosk for this type of operation where it's totally controlled by the municipality. There's no third party involved in, you know, doing any of the, the software updates or anything like that. It's totally controlled in-house.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Hatabian, so it, it does say interactive. So these are touchscreens or are they rotating?
It's a, it's a touchscreen.
Okay, so.
And it, it will be single sided. It's, I think we have it set up where it will be almost perpendicular to Main Street where the, the blank side will be facing the traffic. So there won't be any screens flashing in, into oncoming or to the drivers. I believe it also is equipped with a power saver function. So at night it will either go dim or dark or something. It's a fifty-five inch screen.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tull.
All right. So I gotta bring this back in two weeks?
We'll try to get answers to the specific questions that.
Yeah, if we could just get specifics and, and I think also it's just my, again, my understanding that the Main Street program will be funding the kiosk itself and maintaining and updating. Getting those updates. So I think, you know, if we could just get, you know, this cost and what it's going to cost for Public Works and Power and then those things. And.
Okay.
Could just get a few more specifics on that and, but I think in the next meeting we should be able, if we get those answers to, to give the go ahead. So it's like a great.
All right. Thank you.
Great addition. Thank you. Item B, discussion of public art project at Heritage Park and Waleska Street Bridge. Ms. Green?
Hello. As you will remember from one of your March meetings, our Cultural Arts Commission Chair Jamie Foster presented to you a concept for a project that the Cultural Arts Commission is interested in undertaking. It is located on the trail at Heritage Park with components on either side of the Waleska Street Bridge. You've seen all of that. It's all back in your packet for your review and I am just here to answer any questions you may have. The Cultural Arts Commission has requested a potential budget between twenty-three thousand and fifty-three thousand. It's also of note that we have a private developer in the area who has pledged a sponsorship of twenty-five thousand dollars towards public art within the area. And the Cultural Arts Commission would like to ask that the city utilize that donation towards this project.
Thank you, Ms. Green. That's good to know about the, the private support and pledge. That's awesome. I also went back and looked at the Public Art Master Plan and just to review that, because that was the reason for it. And noticed that that location was where stakeholders had, had ranked as a priority for public art. And of course sculpture being one of the, the forms that is included in the master plan. I think it would be a great addition, addition. And that's, I think, a great location. I think those who walk the trail and walk under those bridges every day, it's always interesting. But I think it would certainly add a lot to that, to that location. So, but my first question was, is it, you know, comply with our, our master plan? And it certainly does in, in every way that I could see. So I think it's a, a great idea and look forward to seeing it implemented. But any other questions for Ms. Green? Mr. Waterman?
Ms. Green, if, you know, this goes through, is there any risk to the, or the public art if the underpasses replaced in the next few years? What would happen then?
We can definitely make certain that the art, obviously it will be our possession. So we will make certain that is something that can be moved to a different location should that happen.
That works for me. Thank you.
Anything else?
Real quick.
Yeah, Mr. Roach?
I think we might've touched on it and I can't remember, but where those sculptures would be is prone to flood. So we'd have to make sure it's.
Yes, and that's something that we have talked with Public Works about. So it will be a part of the call that we put out. A call to artists is basically similar to what we in city government would call, like a request for qualifications. So it would be a part of the call or the RFQ that would specify that materials need to be suitable for a flood prone location. And we would verify with Public Works before anything was completely selected.
Anything else? So this is just listed as discussion. So will you be coming back for a formal approval?
Yes. And if you do have some sort of indication as to how much you would like the Cultural Arts Commission to budget for this project, knowing that we have that twenty-five thousand dollar donation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the good work. Item C, discussion of street acceptance for city maintenance for streets in River Green Pod B four, the retreat. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. City staff and the engineering department has done inspections on the streets in River Green Pod B four, also known as the retreat. And all of those streets have met the requirements of the UDC and is now ready to be accepted for city maintenance. Hope you have any, any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Watson? Should we be bringing back to the next meeting for official approval? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, discussion of Waste Pro's request to amend the city's agreement for solid waste collection services. Mr. Ingram?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk trash with you.
Anytime.
As you know, this is, we're approaching it, the end of a three-year term with Waste Pro. They started providing service to the city of Canton in October of twenty twenty-two. Three-year, initial three-year term in September thirtieth of this year. They've approached city management and offered up to ask council to renew it an additional three years. And if council's amenable to do that, they're going to limit any CPI increase, which occurs on October first rate increase to two point five percent. They are allowed by contract to use the CPI, the CPI as of June thirtieth. To give you a little bit of history, the CPI over the past two years was five point seven percent and five point three percent last year. And I also want to give a, a little shout out to Waste Pro because if you recall, last year, they did not increase it at all. So a little pat on their back. We really appreciate them doing that on behalf of all of our citizens and the, and the waste service users. So it's before you, if you have any questions, Mr. Jerry Harrison, I appreciate him being here. If, if we can try to answer those questions for you. If not, we'll get some answers and we'll put this on the agenda for consideration after next week, May fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. I also want to acknowledge Waste Pro for their great work in the area. We, we've been, and I think we discussed this, that we get little to no calls compared to what we have in the past about service. And so we appreciate Waste Pro. I know personally reached out many times and, and Waste Pro is always very responsive. So we, we appreciate that. We know from experience, every time we've gone out to, for proposals that cost only increase. And so I actually think it is, you know, an excellent deal for our residents to ensure that limit on the, on the, on the CPI and the increase. Based, as you mentioned, it's less than half of what the increases have actually been in the past couple of years. So just one clarification, extension by three years, first year not to increase it more than two point five percent. Is that the first year or would that apply to the three years of the contract?
From what, from what they told us, that is the first year, first year only.
Could we inquire if they would be willing to?
That's.
Do you have a two point five percent for the three-year renewal?
I can certainly put that in front of them and see what they say. Yes, sir.
Just, just a thought, but.
I'm more than happy to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Waterman?
Maybe a clarifying question. So the first, to backtrack a little bit, to renew the, the, the contract for a three-year term is basically to avoid doing an RFP. We'll just go ahead and renew it.
That's correct.
For the first year or as of October first, we will not realize a, a CPI increase. Correct?
Let, let me clarify this for the whole council. If we do not renew their contract, it will automatically renew with a two-year term this October. But if, if we do not renew it, it is subject to go up to the CPI. Now I looked at the CPIs of March was five point three percent. So effectively saying, effectively, if we do not renew their contract, this October first, it will go up five point something percent. And then they will enter a two-year contract. They're just saying extend that to a three-year contract and we'll limit this year's CPI adjustment to two point five percent.
Okay. So we, we extend for three years, the CPI is limited to two, two point five. Year, what happens in year two?
And that's one of the things as Mayor mentioned, I'll, I'll ask from them to see if they're willing to commit that over the next two years.
Because in the current.
Otherwise it just goes back to CPIs.
Yeah. And so that, and that's where I was, I was getting to. So in the current agreement, it's CPI every year. But they have not, per contract at least, this past year, they did not choose to pass through.
And that was an independent decision from Waste Pro. They just said, we're not willing to do that.
And that's much appreciated. Yeah. And that, it would be great to clarify that as what happens in years two and, and three of the agreements. Yes, sir.
And that CPI is compounding. So, you know, the fact that last year there wasn't a rate increase, the application of the two and a half percent, if you decide to renew, is on that existing rate. If we had had the rate increase, that two and a half percent or CPI would be on top of that new rate. So we've actually, we're actually able to hold the rate down for multiple years because of last year's fixed by Waste Pro and this year's potential extension for three years.
So then that's my other question. And I would obviously have to get into the details of the contract. But that's the only opportunity to increase pricing would be the CPI. There's, there's no, you know, caveat in there that should we decide that we're not.
All else, all else.
Covering our costs that we can pass on a, another cost increase or price increase to our, our customers.
Ignoring all else, that's the only thing they can do. They take CPI as of June thirtieth and apply it October first.
Okay.
To raising.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
We certainly appreciate holding the city, not having the increases this past year. Appreciate the partnership. Certainly in line with our goal to provide the best services at the lowest possible cost. And I think we've all lived through, I know some of us have lived through multiple transitions and, and service providers. And we know how much fun that is. So if we can eliminate doing that, at least the next few years, it'd make me happy, you know, Mr. Ingram and several others. And I think residents ultimately. So any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you.
Item E, discussion of proposed reimbursement resolution. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, thank you. Again, you have in front of you a reimbursement resolution. To give you a little background, what these are used for, we're required to enter a resolution so that we can reimburse ourselves for expenditures or expenses that we've already made before we do any type of financing. For example, if, and this one is in regard to the downtown fire station. If we believe we're going to do any financing to construct that fire station, we need to pass this resolution so that we can refund ourselves once that financing goes through. This is the same thing that we did on our water pollution control plant before we got started on it. And you'll also see another one come in a few months, a month or two about the project along North Street. So this is kind of just a formality. It's a legal formality that says that if we have financing, we want to reimburse ourselves if we happen to get started with the project before financing is finalized.
Again, that's just best practice in keeping what we've done in the past. Correct? Any questions? Okay. Keeping Mr. Ingram around for one more. Discussion and proposed contract with Goodwin Mills Kaywood for architectural engineering services. Proposed project being considered along North Street.
Last, but certainly not least, thank you, Mayor and Council. If you recall, Goodwin Mills Kaywood is the same firm that completed our concept renderings for the projects along North Street. They provided a presentation to Mayor and Council as lo, as well as the DDA a couple of months back. In light of wanting to get this project underway, I know the county, the county, which is one of the partners with the city and the DDA, they, they have an interest of getting the, the parking deck as well as their annexed buildings underway as soon as possible. In light of getting this project underway, we went to GMC, Goodwin Mills Kaywood, and asked if they would provide us proposal to do all of the formal and final architect and engineering on this project as well as construction management. So you have in front of you. as well as construction management. So, you have in front of you a proposal that we received earlier today. I apologize I didn't get it to y'all a little earlier, but uh, it's from Goodwin and Mills, Goodwin Mills Kaywood to do the engineering and all the construction management on that project. One of the things I want to point out is you have in front of you, attached to that proposal is a key objective sheet that has some assumptions on it as well as cost estimates. These cost estimates are very preliminary. Obviously, the, the contractor that comes to the table, and we're working on a RFQ for the con- uh, contractor, the construction manager at risk, we're working on that now. But when they get to the table, they will be instrumental in narrowing down those cost estimates for construction. But you have those estimates in front of you and I want to point out one thing. The total estimate for the project was one hundred and eighty-three million. But thirty-three million of that is for an estimated construction cost for the hotel portion of that project. We also have Horwith H T L, which is, which has, which is submitting an RFP for a hotelier on that site. Uh, we will not know the process of that hotel until we get that proposal back. So, that is likely not going to be a cost of the city. That could be a cost of the developer. So, I just wanted to point that out, that even though it shows one hundred and eighty-three million, the total cost of that project probably from the cities in the DDA side is going to be more along the lines of one hundred and fifty million. So, when you consider the cost of, for engineering services, please take that in consideration.
And that hundred and fifty million also includes the county's portion of the project, which are around seventy million.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. As you mentioned, uh, council just got this document this, this afternoon. Uh, I didn't have a whole, a lot of time to review it, but I did read through it quickly and, and we'll certainly go through it more closely, um, uh, you know, before we, we approve this. Um, but I had, I did have some, some initial uh, thoughts and questions, uh, at least if you could give us a little bit of guidance on. Um, I noticed that the uh, proposal states, uh, the city, DDA and county will enter into an IGA by May first and obviously that, that, that's not happened. But I know, uh, there's an IGA, I think, to the county and also um, a, a TAD agreement, uh, uh, which we, um, we said was a prerequisite for, for this project. Uh, so I just want to ask um, our city manager, city attorney, where those agreements stand? Uh, and just confirm those agreements would be approved prior before the approval of, of, of this uh, agreement?
We're still reviewing those. Um, but we are trying to set up a meeting with county staff so we can all go over those together.
Okay.
We, we have, we have provided them with an initial agreement. They've provided some response to that initial agreement. We're trying to set up a date to sit down and go through those responses.
Okay.
The county manager would like to act as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and, 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 and I'm aware of that, but I just want to confirm that approval of those two agreements needs to happen before this proposal will be approved?
I think we can get them all done before this one.
Okay, okay. Uh, I hope so. That'd be great. Um, and then um, there, the proposal also states that the, the county will hire and manage design of the Justice Center expansion. Um, I know we've discussed that, that some kind of internally. My understanding, and I just want clarification for this for, for the public, is that the city will manage all the exterior architecture, uh, design and engineering. The county will be responsible for the interior of the Justice Center uh, buildings?
You're absolutely correct, Mayor. And I apologize for the confusion in that. Uh, that is correct. Uh, we're going to use one engineer and architect to design the whole project. We felt that that was very important to have some consistency across the whole project. The county has agreed with that to allow us to, allow the engineer of record, the potentially Goodwin Mills Kaywood, to do that. They have asked that their engineers, that they'll provide the opportunity to have their engineers design the interior portions of those areas that they're going to use so that they can design that according to their needs of their uses. Um, but yes, Goodwin Mills Kaywood would be the engineer of record to design the whole project. Now, going back to the motel, also, if we can get that, that will be important if we can get Goodwin Mills Kaywood as part of the hotel development as well. And that's kind of one of the reasons why we've included it in the whole scope uh, so that we can hopefully have one engineer to design the whole project.
No, I'd agree. That'd be certainly the best path forward. Um, I, I guess my other question then on, on this proposal, which covers the uh, design, architecture and construction management uh, for the entire project, um, which includes, city manager mentioned seventy million for the county's part. Um, so, and it may be in here. Again, I read it quickly, but I didn't see. So, design, construction, management and architecture fees, obviously the county would be responsible for a portion of those as well. Is that amount or percentage been?
That's going to be part of that agreement that we were talking about earlier.
So, that's part of the IGA or the part of this?
That'll be a part of the IGA, is what, what the county, what portion of this the county's going to be responsible for.
Okay, okay. Um, so a- again, it kind of, those all, those agreements need to be consistent in, I guess, like what leads the way there, but.
We have, on April, I mean, on May fifteenth, we have uh, your next meeting. We have a meeting with the DDA as well. So, we hopefully can, can get a drafts of those agreements on both of those meetings for consideration at the same time.
Okay. Okay, I think those were my primary questions. There probably will be more, but as we go with Mr. Rich.
So, there, um, Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, their, their service fee is six point two percent of the total cost of the project?
That's correct. On what portion they are engaged to design and manage?
So, as portions are, are removed, like if the hotel was removed, that portion of the fee goes. As we start doing work, if the construction costs come down based upon the design, those, those fees also come down.
And, and from my, from what I've learned is that is typical in projects like that, like this because, one, we don't know what the final costs are. It is a floating, you know, somewhat floating cost. Um, and as we pointed out with the hotel, we don't know if that, we don't know how that process is going to work, whether a hotel developer says, no, I've got this. I'm going to take and develop it. I'm going to design it, have my own uh, contractors do that. Then with that portion will be removed from this project. Likewise, is it, if any other, if the project is, is, you know, enlarged and, and grows, you know, that, that needs to be taken into account. So, it is, it is uh, uh, consistent with how projects like this, construction projects like this have occurred, that the engineer of record and construction management is by percentage.
Anything else at this time?
I do have one, one question.
Mr. Phil?
Uh, Mr. Ingram, so if you back out the hotel cost roughly, I think he said thirty million and the county's portion will be seventy. So, the city is left with eighty. What, what's the sources of funds for that eighty million dollars? Is that eighty million estimated?
Uh, the, a large source will be tax allocation district, the TAD. Uh, that will be a large uh, source. If that answers your question or, or financing, we will require bond, you know?
It does. Uh, and I know you, you've thought way beyond this, but where does that put us as far as the other projects, the infrastructure, bearing, power lines, which is probably way down the road, um, as it relates to the TAD funding?
So, in this project, all of that infrastructure is included. So, when they build this, all of that infrastructure will be replaced and moved underground in this particular section. So, if you think about like West Main Street, where we're doing a project right now, we're not impacting anything except for the right of way in that particular area. And that's a million plus project. That's already included in this redesign. Also included in this is the roundabout.
I guess my larger question is how, how will the funding of that impact the totality of what we envisioned the TAD to bring into the city?
You're, you're testing my memory. I think the TAD, we, we anticipated a thirty-year uh, total TAD of three hundred something million? Was that somewhere in that? But I, I'd have to look, Mr. Tullman, but I'm more than happy to do that.
Not pocket change, but, but we still have, we'll still have plenty of money left.
For other projects?
To do the other projects that we've been talking about.
That's correct.
Throughout the city, throughout the downtown area.
So, basically, each project is helping to pay for itself.
Right. Okay. Good. Thank you.
You know, we have some, some discussions, um, even as, as latest today about, you know, the, also uh, Hooker Flat Highway entrance and Canton Village and all this, obviously look, I mean, these are almost bookend projects, you know, and I think they, they do inform each other and impact each other. And it's, you know, it's a huge and important project, a very exciting project. And I know the DDA is, is going to be uh, taking the lead on a lot of it. But uh, again, it is a big project and I know we'll have questions and I think it's just going to be very um, critical for, for council to understand, you know, exactly what the commitments we're committing to and then, you know, where the funding's coming from. Uh, and since I'm happy we are taking the lead on developing it, making sure that it fits and the character of our downtown. But we are, you know, also um, developing for the Justice Center uh, and, and their needs and just making sure that they're contributing what they need to all the, you know, from the very beginning, so.
And I would note too, that just since the presentation that Goodwin Mills Kaywood did to the joint meeting, our offices have been inundated by private developers who want in on this project.
Yeah.
And they all like the fact that the city, that, that the city wants to take the lead to actually get it done.
Yeah.
To, to make sure it's designed well.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a big project and a critical project, but I, I think uh, our goal to, to try to be as efficient with it and streamline the processes as, as, as much as possible is, is very noble and critical to the success of it. So, uh, but we appreciate that. So, um, so the next steps, let me just confirm that again, is, is then for the DDA to review this along with the uh, TAD and IGA, which, which council will need to approve as well.
On May fifteenth. Uh, along those lines, we also hope to have an RFQ. I mentioned the RFQ. This is being a construction manager at risk versus a design bid.
Right.
And so, we need to issue an RFQ for that C Mar, that contractor. Uh, we hope to have an RFQ ready by May fifteenth. So, as soon as the engagement is signed, we can get that RFQ out to the market so that we can get that, hopefully get that contractor onboard by July fourth, somewhere in that ballpark, first of July. And so, that they can start working with the, the designer GMC on the project and start actually putting some pencil to paper and coming up with better cost estimates. And, and again, these figures are estimates. These are preliminary estimates. So, at that time, we'll get some more final construction estimates.
And if you noted in the proposal, the design's going to take about twelve months to complete. Um, by having the construction manager at risk onboard, within the twelve months while they're working on the design, they will be able to start with site prep. And they estimate construction to be between twelve and eighteen months. But that twelve and eighteen months doesn't have to run post the first twelve months of design. It can go, you know, uh, there can be some concurrence in there. So, you're looking at a project that could be done within a year and a half.
If it's not done in a year and a half, are they going to come back and ask for more money for management fees and stuff like other people?
No, that's the beauty of a construction manager, risk con- contract. It's not based on time. It's based upon what they estimate the total project cost to be.
And it's in their best, both of their best interests to get the project done on time.
Which, which is what we did on the Jones Building was a C Mar.
Right.
And, and it actually came in under budget.
Mm-hmm. Great. Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Ingram.
Thank you.
Mr. Peppers?
I don't have anything else to add tonight.
You don't? Right. Just confirm there's no council, council introduced items?
I do have a follow-up question, though.
Okay.
Mr. Peppers, um, if you recall from the last meeting, I had asked about getting a uh, representative from DOT here. Uh, wondering if there was any traction on that?
There has not been any update on that.
Okay. So, is there a community relations person or someone that we can annoy to the point that they actually do respond, come up here? Um, and I say that just because we, in, in this year alone, we have made certain decisions because we thought that certain uh, projects were, would have been unsafe for residents because DOT plans to do, they, they have plans for twenty, one forty, um, and so on. But, you know, we, we've, we've denied things. Um, but yet, I know the last time, uh, last, last month, you said it was February, um, and you haven't heard anything. So, I, I'm just, I just want to stay on this because I do want someone here quickly.
So, my suggestion would be that maybe the mayor and I draft a letter together and send it to our G dot board member as opposed to the district engineer's office.
Okay.
But, right. The board member is appointed by the state legislature, so we can call representative as well.
Okay. So, like, I, yes, absolutely. I'd like to do that.
Get that done.
I have one item this evening in my report. Um, and uh, that is for a appointment uh, for a new member to the Downtown Development Authority. Um, this will be to replace Corey Schubert, who is stepping down uh, uh, prior to uh, his term ending at the end of the year, but he is stepping down at this time. And um, uh, I would like to uh, make a, an appointment of Ashley Carlisle, who is a, a partner at Grisham Pool in Carlisle, located in downtown Canton. She is a, a family a- attorney. Um, I think this will be a great addition to the DDA due to our large uh, stakeholder um, uh, population from the uh, legal community in downtown. And also, as we discussed with this North Street project, which is uh, you know, partnership with the Justice Center uh, and the court system. Uh, I think it will be great to have someone onboard there. Uh, those of you know that know Ashley Carlisle, uh, she's very competent and energetic and uh, had um, multiple conversations with her. She's very excited uh, and eager uh, to take on this responsibility and uh, and um, is excited to be an engaged member of the Downtown Development Authority. So, I would like to um, nominate and point Ashley Carlisle as uh, to the Downtown Development Authority.
Second?
I have a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post nay? All members voted for a no- motion. So, welcome Ms. Carlisle. And also, again, want to thank uh, Mr. Schubert for his service on the Downtown Development Authority and uh, all that he does for downtown Canton and, and uh, our merchants and businesses in downtown as well. So, um, that is all I have this evening. So, I will entertain a motion uh, to adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation and real estate.
To make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Second?
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post nay? We adjourn. Thank you, bro.
You're gonna go ahead and do the building authority?
Yes. Go ahead and-
Just go ahead and do that.
Call it to order.
Call it to order and then-
Okay.
Vote to go in and then we're done.
Okay. At this time also, I would like to call to order a um, executive session for the Canton, no.
Just a meeting.
A meeting of the Canton uh, Building Authority. And those members, um, would it be those members? members?
Counsel?
Four of ya, I don't-
I mean, I've, I've got the list, but I just- It's only those the members would vote on going in, uh, to the meeting, so, um-
So some agents need to make the motion to go into executive session, discuss, uh, real estate and litigation with them as well.
Mr. Rich?
Make a motion to go to executive session to discuss litigation and real estate.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? All members voted for the motion, so, okay?
Make a motion for a five-minute recess?
Okay.
Thank you, Sandy.
Take a five-minute recess here?
Second.
Thank you.